Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Commissioner.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, how are you?
I'm fine.
That's what I try to do.
Really?
Something. I remember that she definitely talked to me. It was sort of the purpose of consensus is to see if there's. Yeah, but that's not exactly what it's about. But I think. That would matter. Right. Right. What can I sort of question? So we're. Like a town to. You know, use that. You know. Okay. Normally you can set. I'm not going to be. I'm not. I may throw maybe. That's why I'm really. I don't know. There are anything. I don't. I didn't. And usually. My total amount of stuff. I mean. James, now all you have to hide. Well, if they have that, they're just. It's saying. We hired another. Now, it's all together. Yeah, because it's like. Something. I just. It's not easy. But I think. You know, the first part. And the desire of saying, you know, if we should. This is. I'm finding. Give you. I'm finding that. Maybe we don't have a lot of people or something. I'm sorry. Maybe we don't have a lot of people that's willing to get through this. Very quickly.
So if you talk to you, if you wanted to put it. I would think. We only have a couple of items. Require any discussion.
As I said, so you shared that one, then I'm going to put off some. You know. Or maybe one minute. And I just. Good morning.
Good.
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm watching news last night, Sam. You know, not only did they have the Rose Festival. You know, I didn't know that the ships coming in. But on NATO and second and third and third, there's a lot of construction. All these things are up. Sounds like. Leave at six fifteen in the morning.
Wow. It's going to be a month soon, so.
Yeah. Yeah, right after. Right after this weekend, I'm heading for speed round. I don't believe that. This is practice. So I just. Place us. Get my system tested and make sure all the cans are in rightly. So this morning, I turned it back. Turned it back. Maybe the.
I don't have to worry about it all.
Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. Okay. I was just downstairs here with the last. I see. I'm going to expand. Got power down. It's probably not straight for six. You got all the things invested? You got it all. Yeah. You got the bell? You got the bell? We got all the rest of the head. We got the. Pressure. Got the tire. So. Would you kind of come and talk to me? Yeah. I didn't.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, because I believe Saturday. And tomorrow. Three and a half is going to be nice. I feel you want to see what they're. They're supposed to be like a couple of sitting around a long. Two or three months. Yeah, I mean, so. It's more over. And it's like, oh, I haven't found the finish. But a few of those. Just right. And then you say it's. Doing. I'm doing work on the airport. Second, third, fourth. Yeah. So the captain's standing down anyway. So it's like, yeah, we have to be there. Yeah. We have to be there. Eight to five. Yeah, eight to five. Getting this all back. So by now, you know, such time to watch. I'm just going to be. Six o'clock in the morning. Well, we got them back.
Yeah. Yeah. Several weeks ago. Forty-five. Then you had.
So is this a separate? Should be something. I've had your time. It's a. Saturday. Oh. Is this what the public? The. Do we have? Is there? Do you get a public hearing? We just. Who? For. Don't you go on. And I'm. Yeah. Are that being combined? We different. We got. We have first two residences. But we first. First. I'm going to have. First, we adopted. So I think. That's crazy. We lost. I think. It's a. I think. Four or five. I think. Yeah. I think it's a direct. I think. My brain. All his troubles.
Oh, here we go.
Always. We do. I just. I mean, already the other construction. Thank you. Then. All the eighteen ninety. They're going to. To. I think. Yeah. Oh, they're actually using. They're using. So. Yeah, I see. You know. And. And. We. We. It's. And. It's. There's something. I'm. So. I'm. I'm. I just. I just. We can. I'm. And that's. I just. I just. I just. I'm having. I'm. 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 Racing around. I'm. 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 I'm.
Okay.
And we will open this formal session of Yamhill County Commissioners for June eighth, twenty seventeen. And I would like to ask, Mr. Gilli, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sturd, if you would please introduce our invocation.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pleased to have with us this morning Pastor Tim English. Pastor Tim serves as a pastor at Church on the Hill. And he and his wife Rhonda have lived in Mack for two and a half years. He is the project leader for Serve Mack, which is a one-day event which gets the community and members of Church on the Hill together for community service projects, which culminates for a free movie in the park at Joe Dancer Park on July twenty-ninth. So anybody's interested in getting out and doing some community service. Tim and his wife have been serving communities and churches for nearly thirty years. Pastor Tim English, thank you for being with us.
I'm glad to be here and thank you very much. As I pray over him for you, if it's okay, I'd like to come around, just touch the front of your podiums. Just technology personally before I pray, okay? Father God, I thank you for just those in this room who have responded to the opportunity and the need for governance in our county and for our communities and the people that are neighbors that we live and serve with. I thank you for their courage to lead our county forward in the decisions that impact the lives of people. Because at the end of the day, it is about how we, as a society, as a county, how we are able to carry on our lives with the liberty and justice for all, as we even spoke of in our pledge. So, Father, for these men and women who have responded to the opportunity, I pray that you give them the discernment, the understanding, and the wisdom is necessary, God, to make the decisions that they must. Perhaps there are some decisions that are more black and white, and let them be unified around those things. But as in life and so many things, there are so many shades of gray that we must face in the decisions, not only in our own lives, but as we have influence and leadership over other areas that influence people. So where there are these shades of clarity of black versus white, God, I pray that this group of leaders, these commissioners, together will find those things that serve our people in our county best. Sometimes making hard decisions between one thing and another. But yet, God, I pray that you give them the counsel, you give them the discernment and wisdom that they need to lead with certainty and assurance. Have blessings on them in their own homes and the work that. God, and I see them as servants of, not only of our Creator, God, but I see them as servants of our people. And so continue to bless them in the work that they do. And I say this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you for the.
Appreciate your being here. Thank you.
Okay. I have no intent to speak hard. You have none? Very good. So we will skip item A and go to item B, the consent agenda. And we have a number of items that are on our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
It's been moved that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item C, old business. I see none. Other business. I have add-ons here. And the first one is a consideration of the approval to submit application for the Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Program, TGF grant, in the amount of two hundred thousand for the Yamhailis West Sider Trail Master Plan Project. Any conversation on this one? Discussion?
Well, I'd like to just add something that I spoke about at informal. And that is when I look at county staff and I see that virtually every, every department is on overload with their schedules, with the workload, and with the fact that this county does so much more with less when you compare number of personnel and support staff that other counties have. Noting that, I think that any, any continued contribution, whether it's financial or whether it's the use of staff time, which is already strained, I would not be in favor of that when there are so many other projects that we could be working on in this county devoting more time and attention than government funding recreation. So I would be opposed to approving this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think the only comment I have is that I agree with Commissioner's stare at that, how our staff is overworked. And she means how much we do with, how much our staff, we ask of our staff, how much we do with the limited resources we have. I think, to me, the only thing that I'd like to say is I think it goes a little bit more deeper than that. And it doesn't affect my vote on this situation, but I think we have to always ensure that for the health of our staff and everything, that we have the adequate resources to do the job we need to do. Now, whether that means adding staff in certain areas, the support functions like that or whatever, I'm not opposed to that all, but I think we have to do something to address our staff needs. But on this, I'm. If I'm moving forward with this.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just, to Commissioner Sturd's point, it is important that we recognize our staff and the tremendous amount of work they do with limited resources. And providing those resources means that we have to have a strong economy in this, in Yamhill County. We need to have things that invite people to bring their businesses here and expand the businesses that are already here. As we develop a stronger economy, there will be more resources available to Yamhill County to provide staff, to provide those services. This is a, the funds that we're going to be going after are funds that are already dedicated to recreational activities and could not be used any other way. Staff, the staff commitment to going out and seeking this funding is minimal compared to the benefit that could be derived from the economic vitality this could create. The other thing that I'm very, very, that I think is critical in the job we do, is the health and well-being of our citizens. A healthy county means that we're providing resources to get people out of their homes and recreating to build stronger bodies and stronger spiritual lives. And I think that anything that we can do to contribute to that makes a significant difference in the welfare and would probably cut down on the amount of resources we have to devote to health and human services because we could create a healthier population. So with that, I would ask for a motion on this matter.
Also move.
It's been moved that we approved the, moving forward with the application to the Oregon Transportation and Growth Management Program. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving to item number two on the other business, consideration of the approval of amendment number one to an agreement between Yamhill County and Jonathan, Jonathan Mayo, Board Order seventeen dash one-one-five, to authorize up to three thousand dollars for actual incurred travel and lodging-related expenses. Can somebody speak to this?
Sure, I can.
Okay. Christian?
Mr. Chair, this is an amendment to an agreement that the assessor has entered into with Jonathan Mayo to assist with training and consulting for their Ascend and Proval accounting, I'm sorry, tax and assessment software. She's, she lives in Gresham. This would allow her to reduce some travel time by staying in McMinnville. So our assessor asked for some additional authorization to spend up to three thousand dollars for actual either lodging expenses or to reimburse her for some additional travel expenses. So that's what this is.
Thank you, Christian. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay. It has been moved that we approve this request on behalf of county assessor to enter into this agreement with Jonathan Mayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you. And the third item we have under other business is consideration of the adoption of a supplemental budget for the transfer appropriation authority and funds from the insurance reserve to the Fair Board, or Fair Fund. And I believe this was a last-minute add-on by our administrator.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, you'll recall that in March, we had the public hearing for the supplemental budget to move funds from the insurance reserve to the Fair Fund. You did approve of two resolutions that transferred the funds, but your administrator failed to remind you that you also needed to adopt and approve the supplemental budget. And our eagle-eyed finance manager caught that yesterday when we were doing our last-minute call for appropriation adjustments to sixteen, seventeen budgets. So we're cleaning up now, asking you to now approve of the supplemental budget.
We did everything up to, but not including.
Correct.
This transaction. So I would make the motion that we approve the supplemental budget as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. With that, thank you. And that completes the other items. The next thing we have are public hearings. And with that, I'm going to then, do I recess first or just go right into public hearing? Okay. We will move into a public hearing to discuss the request to install a gate on a public road, Bald Peak Lane, at the request of all of the residents under ORS three-six-eight dot zero-five-six. And I know county council is here to speak to that. And I, our county surveyor, Bill Gilli, is here. So, and I do know that there is, in the audience, we have people, I'm assuming, since a hundred percent of the people were in favor of this, that they're, I'm not. not seeing any opposition, but anything I need to say to conduct this hearing, council?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, no, you don't need to follow the land use public hearing. You just need to, you've opened the hearing, so we would hear from whoever wants to comment about this. This is done under a state statute that allows the county to approve a gate or a cattle crossing, and the gate was requested, and it's for a road that is off of Bald Peak, and I think that the residents could address that, or the applicants for this could address that, and Mr. Gilli's here as well if you have questions for him. And I would just note that you have the draft board order, and I would want that to, section B of the findings to be amended, to add, all, to read, the second sentence of it would read, "All residents of, comma, and owners of property accessed by, comma, Bald Peak Lane have consented to the construction and maintenance of the gate at the proposed location." I didn't want it to be limited to residents, it was the owners as well, there are some vacant property up there. And unless we hear from some opponents that D would be amended, where it says there was, you know, blank testimony, that there was no testimony in opposition, so keep adding that.
All right.
Now, if you would just take testimony, and we could move on with this.
Is there, do we have anybody here who wishes to speak in regard to this matter before the Commissioners? If you would, please come forward, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Good morning.
Good morning.
John Robert Crew, address is 18100 Northeast Bald Peak Road. Actually, Bald Peak Lane, anyway, all of the residents up there, and the vacant lots are owned by my father, and he is also in agreement, we're all in agreement. We've had fair amount of traffic coming up there, people driving up behind my barn, and my wife and I walked up there, this was just last year, we walked up there to see if these people were there, and they were fornicating in the truck behind my shop, you know, so anyway, we just want to keep the people that don't belong there out. We had a resident last fall, some guy was really hunting my dogs, we had to get the , you know, the county sheriff out there to remove this guy, and, you know, we just, we just want to keep those kind of people out.
Yeah.
We haven't had any opposition from the sheriff's department, from the fire department, planning building, everybody is in agreement to let us go ahead and put this gate in.
Okay.
I don't have anybody who's opposed to that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would also notice that we issued notice to all of the owners and residents on or about May 9th, 2017, and it's been posted on the county's website as well with the proposed board order.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crew.
Oh, and posted on Bald Peak Road as well.
On the internet, okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, do I have any other testimony regarding this? Mr. Gilli, is there anything that the county surveyor or the public works department has to offer on this?
Well, just to say that this is a relatively rare application. We did research with county council's office help, that we did do one of these back in the year 2000, it was at Upper Island Road, similar circumstances, vandalism theft. That one had additional complication, that there's a park down there that's accessed by this road, so as conditions, the commissioner said that they had to open and close the gate, open it at dawn, close it at dusk kind of thing, every day, and the applicant agreed to do that. That's worked out actually fairly well. We went into one little glitch, when we had a windstorm, it knocked some power lines down, the farmer's foreman, who was in charge of that, who was a very astute, opening and closing that gate, left it locked for safety reasons, given people going over the power lines. Well, when the power company came to fix the lines, it was locked, of course. So, anyway, we worked around that, and the lines are now fixed, and it's, things are working well again.
Good.
But this one doesn't have that kind of complication. But the board could assign any kind of conditions you wanted to this, if you felt appropriate.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Gilli. Do I have any questions for anybody from the Commissioners? Just the only comment I would make, this gate is being installed at the expense of the residents?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Construction, solely the responsibility of the applicant and the residents and owners.
Okay.
I just had a couple of comments, Mr. Chair, and I brought up one at Tuesday meeting, is the question to ensure that none of the property beyond that gate was public lands, and I was assured that none of the properties, all privately owned. And then Mr. Crew answered my second question this morning, that was if TVFNR was brought in discussion regarding wildland firefighting and what that gate may cause, and he said that they weren't in opposition at all, so with those two comments, I have no objection.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so with that, then, I will close the public hearing, and we will go back into regular session for the purpose of taking action on this request. Do I hear a motion, please?
So moved, I move approval of item E1.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, point of order, with the changes that I've proposed to the draft board order.
Yes, so I'll revise that. I move approval of item B1 with the changes that were suggested by council regarding all residents and property owners of Bald Peak Lane, and noting that there was no testimony in opposition, but there was testimony in support.
Very good. All right, I have a motion to approve this agenda item. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay. And moving then to the last item on the agenda is announcements. Do I have any announcements from my fellow Commissioners?
Just the announcement that is tonight, the Trail Community Dialogue Meeting at the Kent Els, Kent Taylor Civic Hall, there was some confusion, I got a couple of calls, so I don't know if other people, we called the other Commissioner's staff, that they thought, for some reason, either it was here or they didn't know where the Kent Taylor Civic Hall was. So I just want to clarify, that is tonight, it starts at 7:30 and goes to 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, any other announcements? I will close this session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners' formal session for June 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, get your signature.